We'll take this moment, Ari. We will take this moment to go ahead and elect our officers.
I nominate Don Street for president.
I second the motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Al abstain. I'll nominate Mike as the vice president.
I'll second the motion.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Very good. Thank you. Thank you for starting the meeting with your sore throat and everything. First on the agenda is Edwina Goffey for health. Edwina?
I'm here asking for permission to have the health department painted. It's been several years since we painted, since it's been painted. And we would just like to have your permission to paint it. We have the money to paint it. We can take that money out of Fund 8912, which is a CARES fund. So we'd just like to have your permission to have the entire apartment painted. The labor cost would be about $3,000. And then we would have to buy the paint. And we would purchase that at Ace Hardware, good quality paint. And with paint pricing, we're thinking probably $750 for paint. We'd just like to have your permission for that. Yes. Yes. And Alexander Construction, he has done, worked for us in the past. Brian Alexander is his name. He's done several, not several, but a few jobs for us. And we're very happy with his work. He's insured, bonded, and he's willing to take on the job, so.
Using the CARES fund is acceptable?
Yes. Yes. It's an old grant that we received from the state. And as long as we use money to promote, improve, and protect the citizens of our county, then we can use that money.
I'll second.
You made the motion. Jenny seconded. Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good luck. Nice color. Nathan, project updates and appointments.
Good evening. I'll start with the courthouse project. I do not have any change orders for consideration tonight. The request regarding sidewalk construction is, however, still outstanding. I have approved one under my threshold over the last several weeks. Can see the rate in which they're coming in is starting to slow down as we are moving further out of demolition and deeper into putting the building back together. This is a request for just over $5,000 in carpentry work, part for a little bit of trim for a door in the courtroom-turned-meady room, and for medallions for ceiling-mounted light fixtures in the meeting room and public corridors. This door trim is necessary to clean up the doorway where we discovered the massive I-beam that required us to make some floor plan changes several months ago. The medallions are required because the ceiling joists are running the wrong direction for the electrical subcontractors to be able to install the fixtures as initially intended. And additionally, because they can be removed, they will allow us to avoid cutting access panels into the ceilings in these primary public spaces. Additionally, there are one or two currently under review. Any questions on that front? All right. Quickly on finances, our current contingency balance is $217,565.60, just shy of $198,000 if we account for the not-yet-approved sidewalk change order at its full cost, plus whatever interest accrued in December. And I'm just waiting on the monthly statement from First National to get that information. As I imagine you all have seen by now, the scaffolding has been removed from the clock tower. All of the masonry work at that level has been completed, and they're more than half-done with their work on the bulk of the exterior. Gibson Lewis has begun installing woodwork that ton and blank removed during demolition. So some wainscoting, some door casings, chair rail, et cetera. And then that will all get cleaned up, restained, et cetera, later on. Most of the ceilings on the main floor, which are drywall, have been installed. The guy who will be overseeing the installation of cabinetry and case work trim was on-site last week to take measurements. We expect to start seeing trim and door frames arriving later this week, with door slabs coming in a few weeks. The flooring installer will visit tomorrow in advance of installing tile floors, bases, and wet walls in the restrooms. Otherwise, MEP and painting subcontractors keep rolling along. Any questions on the project? And wanted to make sure that the review two know, now that you're on board, if you want to come in and check in on progress yourselves, let me know, and we'll coordinate with John Allen, our superintendent, and make sure you see what we're talking about. So John Allen, our superintendent, accompanied me when I took a number of department heads on a walk-through on New Year's Eve. And he suggested that they're still on track to be done by about the Fourth of July. Now, his boss, the project manager, has not committed to that date. And ultimately, he probably has a little more say in it. But John is the one who is here every day, and he feels like the couple of delays we faced, like when we ended up having to replace the entire slab, we have caught up. A little bit of a talking to, to the masons, got them on a quicker path. And so they've caught up on some of their delays, and John seems to feel pretty good about that calendar. All right. And then I have a number of appointments that I would like for you to consider this evening to the various commissions and other entities with which I work. Ask Commissioner Street to replace Maurice Lamer on the Community Development Commission, effective upon appointment. Commissioner Kniebel to replace Mr. Lamer on the Courthouse Steering Committee, effective upon appointment. Mr. Lamer to fill a vacant seat on the Community Development Commission, effective upon appointment. Claude Lemire to serve a second term, a first full-four-year term as the Town of Winamax nominee to the Economic Development Commission, effective on the first of February. Stan Bennett, Kyle Sechek, John Frane, and Tina Stacey to serve second one-year terms on the Redevelopment Commission, effective tomorrow. And Ray Hebel and Kelsey Zellers to serve second terms, first full-two-year terms, on the Tourism Advisory Council, effective upon appointment. Questions, concerns, other thoughts? Sent that out to the two of you in advance. Make sure you've had any questions. But that's more or less maintaining where we've been other than replacing a former commissioner on seats, with seats held by commissioners.
Aye.
Yes. We have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve all of the appointments as stated.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any discussion, further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right. Thank you, Nathan. Moving on to other business, we have claims and payroll number one.
Payroll.
I second.
Thank you, Jenny. Any discussion? Being none, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Special session minutes from December the 18th, 2024. I'll make a motion to accept those.
I haven't seen those. Do we have them? The special session minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept those.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Next, we have the 2025 meeting payroll and holiday schedules. We should have all received those. Put those over.
I'll make a, I've reviewed, and I'll make a motion to approve the 2025 meetings, payroll schedules, and holiday schedules.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The Plaski County Acceptable Use Policy Technology Assets. Do you have a chance to review that document today? And comments or questions? Guys are way more. Jacob, did you have a chance? Acceptable Use Policy.
I'll make a motion to accept the the policy. The acceptable use policy as written.
Very good. I'll, I will second that. Any further discussion?
No.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Next, we have a resolution for certificate of tax sale. Teresa had sent us.
These are properties that have not, that did not sell at the original balance. These are, try and get them back on. That's what. I didn't have one.
Okay, so we weren't supposed to get the list of those just this form to pass it? Oh, okay.
We're gonna have more this year. A few this year.
There really isn't, I may enter to them. Can you hear me? Yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Commissioners to sign for the commercial policy?
And normally, it's just, this is being insurance policy.
December property So no action, just sign. We don't need.
Okay.
Next is moratorium discussion on battery energy storage systems, carbon capture, et cetera.
I did. And I'll start this off, and then others can comment as needed. Can you guys hear me okay? Yeah. Okay, good. Many of the counties around us right now are discussing all of these projects that are coming into these counties. BESS stands for Battery Energy Storage Systems. CCS is Carbon Capture and Storage. And then we have data centers, which is entirely Greek to all of us at this point. And then industrial solar. So I did want to just start out by reading a comment on property rights, because I know when we've had meetings in the past, there's always an argument for property rights. So I'd like to start off with this. "Those who lease," and this is "Property Rights and the Founding Fathers and What It Means to Rural America," Views and Comments by J.W. Thompson. "Those who lease or sell their land to renewable energy developers often claim 'my land, my choice,' and that their rights are being violated when others oppose these developments. However, they seem to forget that our democracy, founded on the principle of being of the people, by the people, for the people, exists to balance individual rights with the collective welfare of the community. Our rights, as enshrined in the Declaration of Independence, are not granted for individual gain, but intended to blend personal freedoms with public good. These rights have a responsibility to not infringe on the rights or welfare of others. Unregulated property use can harm neighbors, communities, and the nation itself. Laws limiting property use, from zoning to environmental protections, are fulfillments of the Constitution's core values. In the 1980s, local officials in Lake Tahoe became alarmed as more homes and development sprang up along the lakefront, causing the lake water to cloud. Those officials created a regional plan to stop the deterioration. Part of the plan included a temporary moratorium on new construction, allowing time to decide how best to preserve Lake Tahoe. This moratorium was challenged by landowners. The case ended with a 2002 Supreme Court decision that sided with the local officials. Justice John Paul Stevens wrote that "a temporary moratorium can be justified to protect a vital public resource." He argued that Lake Tahoe was worth safeguarding for future generations, even if it means some property owners face delays or restrictions. Fast forward to today, where rural landowners believe they have the right to sell or lease land for industrial purposes, whether for large-scale renewable energy, battery storage, or carbon storage developments. Those who oppose these developments have every right to advocate for the enforcement of existing laws and regulations, or to push for new ones that protect the health, safety, and welfare of those adversely affected. This is not an attack on democracy. It's democracy in action. Reject the selfish and false story that property rights are absolute. They were never intended to be absolute. Perform your own due diligence on the nature of property rights and their limits, and resist those who exploit fear and misinformation to prioritize personal gain over the shared values." And I read that because I want to talk about moratoriums. We've heard for four years that moratoriums are not, we can't do those in Plaski County. But I want to assure you that counties all over the state of Indiana, and further, are putting these moratoriums in place. And I have a list of several of the counties around us that have done so. The first ones that I want to discuss, and I have up here, if anybody would like, I have printed copies of what a moratorium is. A moratorium is nothing more than a pause to give counties and local officials and people a chance to get protections in place, so that we're not blindsided by large corporate interests that come into the county. It doesn't mean things aren't going to happen. It just means we need time to look at things and to make the best decisions for our county. Currently, in Plaski County, we have no ordinances written to protect us from battery energy storage systems, data centers, carbon capture. There's no language in there. So for us not to take a pause and make sure that our area plan commission can take the time to get this done would just be reckless. So I am asking, because we have no ordinances in place for those, that that should be an automatic moratorium. We know these things are coming, and we need time to prepare, so that we're not caught off-guard. We, I think we've seen over the last four years what can happen when a community isn't prepared. And we look around us, we were kind of the guinea pigs for a lot of this. But we look around us now, and there are many counties who have learned at our expense. And they're putting all kinds of protections in place. Many have put in and instituted moratoriums. I've spoken with commissioners, I went to the commissioner trainings the last two weeks. I've talked to commissioners all around us, and they are all working towards that, or they are working to get their ordinances put in place as fast as they can. So I am requesting, I mean, I would like to make a more, well, we can have more discussion. I'm not going to make this, I'm not going to make a motion on my own. But I would like to hear from the other two commissioners in regards to data centers, which I don't think half of us can even define what a data center really is, carbon capture and sequestration, and battery energy storage systems. So I'm asking for discussion among those three topics first. Large-scale battery storage? My concern is the size of what we're looking at. When we are looking at, at this time, 26,000 acres of recorded leases in solar, what type of battery storage does that look like? And are our protections in place for something that size? I mean, we know there's toxic chemicals. We know fire is a big issue. We haven't addressed anything with fire departments as far as any battery energy storage, what that would look like, who would provide the training. We don't know any of that right now. So I would like to at least give pause so that our own EMS services, EMA, can, can put some protections in place for all of us. I mean, what would you do in the, what would you do in the case of an emergency? What kind of evacuation plan would you have to evacuate people in an area that large?
So may I remind everyone in the audience that this is open to the public. It's a discussion among the commissioners. If we have public comment, we can do that at the end of the meeting. We'll give guidance for that. So I appreciate that. My stance, Jenny, on all that is, I am not opposed to a moratorium on some of these items. I think it would be good to review our ordinance, but I also believe we have to do it legally and properly.
Exactly.
Agree with that.
I do.
And Jacob, you help us here a little bit. If we put a moratorium on any item, what the legal process would be for that?
I did receive an email, and I realize I'm, I'm new to this discussion here. So I'm, if I'm repeating stuff that people already know, I apologize. Essentially, as the executive body, you guys are able to move forward with this, if that's something you wish to do. This is generally done, or would go through the area plan commission or the VZA. And there would be an ordinance prepared. Normally, how that's done is, once that is promulgated through that body, it would come back to the commissioners for review, and either for you to accept that, or you can send it back with comments, or additions, or corrections. I'd like to see.
Right.
Statutorily, there's a little bit of a ping-pong process where it comes to you, and then it can go back. And I don't have the statute in front of me, but I know that there are so many days that if, if no changes are made, then it essentially becomes enforceable ordinance. But that's where you would want to start, would be through the UDO and the hearing.
So we could, we would develop, we would develop a motion, or in the future, something written out.
Yes.
And we would pass it, and then we would send it on to the plan commission for their consideration.
Well, and generally, it's the plan commission that is going to have the the, the language of what, what it is. And I do appreciate your comments about how it's a temporary. A lot of counties get this confused, where they think a moratorium is just a blanket.
Right.
Not, you know, whatever the issue is, not allowed. That's not what a moratorium is. Moratorium is a, generally, I, I recommend that there be a specific timeframe, and within that, a reason, and I think highlighted some of those, of why there is a period of time in order to do that. This can also be done through the statutory abatement process as well, where same thing for these companies that apply for tax abatements. Statutorily, the county council considers those, but it's the same type of resolution passed. So it's, you're looking at it both from a project standpoint, and also from a, whether or not the county will give tax abatement.
Would, would those moratoriums have to be separate for battery energy storage systems, carbon capture and storage, and data centers? Would those be separate moratoriums?
You know, the ones that, the ones that I've worked on, I, my initial reaction would be that they would. And I think from a legal standpoint, as far as if those things are challenged, it's going to be easier to defend if you have a, have a specific industry that you're, rather than having a broad sweep, because there may be certain things that apply to solar that don't apply to carbon, vice versa.
We'll cross that bridge.
But it's too late. If the carbon gets here, and we don't have our ordinances in place, any application that comes in, comes in under whatever ordinances the county has in place, Mike. And currently, we have nothing in our ordinances to protect us from BESS, carbon capture, or data centers. We are sitting ducks if the application comes in, and we haven't acted. Now, we've seen this when we started out at 4,500 acres of industrial solar, and we didn't act. And now we're at 26,000 acres of industrial solar and counting, because we still haven't acted. So we can't, this is not, I don't want to be reactive. I, we, it's too late.
Jenny, are you aware of?
I would have to look on carbon capture. I think.
Ben?
I, yeah. Um, yeah. As a matter of fact, Marshall County just put a moratorium on all of the same things. Just within the last week, they approved moratorium for all those. They, they are afraid of being in that same situation. So I, I, we have nothing to lose by placing moratoriums on these three project types. We have, we have everything to lose if we don't. And I have spoken with Carla, and she has said there is, no, we, we don't have anything at this time. So our, go ahead.
So I.
Sorry. Mike, Don, who are you?
We're all new here. So our, really, our next step would be, from my perspective, would be to develop something in writing, Jacob's help, for us as commissioners, to send to the plan commission, we would like for you to work on this, and these are some of the items that we're thinking. Then it's up to the plan commission to have a public hearing, to review it, develop it, public hearing, develop it then, send it back for us, for us to review it. public hearing, develop it then, send it back for us, for us to review it, either adopt it or send it back for revisions. I pretty.
That's a summary.
Yeah. Okay. And I think that we, we as commissioners need to think about that, about what, what you're talking about with different areas. I think we need to look forward as well, what else might be coming that we're not expecting. So we're covered for, for the future. I do believe in property owner rights, but also said that we have ordinances in place to protect.
Absolutely. So.
Rest of something and send it to.
Yeah. So can we, can we make a motion for a moratorium tonight and then send that to?
Well, I mean, it's actually.
Right.
But essentially, what we can do is, I think the way you would do it, the motion to essentially.
Develop a plan?
To develop a plan.
For us to send.
So we'll have to have it, a period plan we'll have to start working on. And I think there is, I do have an email of a draft, something that may have been prepared prior to, to be involved with the county. It's an incredibly good place to start.
For you to review that.
I did receive it today via email and I had a chance to briefly look at it.
So, so what I hear you suggesting is that we don't make a motion for a moratorium at this time, that we start to work on ordinances at this time?
Well, what I have in my suggestion is that there was a ordinance that had not passed yet. There were the, the only one that was going to establish a battery energy storage system for two or 12 months. But my understanding, if you can use this email, was that there were seven meetings that the A P C was scheduled that were not able to be reviewed.
Well.
There was not a public hearing for that either, and that's on the bottom of that document.
Right. I think they're also struggling to hire an attorney right now. So I know that they're a little reluctant to move forward with a lot of things, the BZA as well as the area plan commission, because they don't have legal counsel. So, I mean, I would prefer to make a motion to put that moratorium in place and then move forward.
Well, I mean.
You can make a motion to, I guess, contact them and reach out to them, but it's got to be that forward in the commission. Okay. From a statute. Don, may I turn in some of this based on some past experience with similar process way back in 2018 when we dealt with wind. So Mr. Evers.
Right. In general, the process to start with the plan commission, but there is a provision in the 600 series of 3674 that does permit the board of commissioners to send something to the plan commission. It can originate with you. And given the concerns you've addressed about the scheduling issues and legal representation issues the plan commission has had, I think it might be advisable if you get a hold of that draft ordinance that you have had, and maybe tonight's motion is to instruct Jacob to start drafting the language for you that you can send them to initiate it. And that way, worst case scenario, you avoid a situation where they pass something that you guys don't think is appropriate and you have to ping pong it back and forth. At least at this point, you've cut back on some of that redundancy by saying, here is where we want to start. Consider it. If you have some changes, okay, advertise it, do the public hearing, send it to us. But you might be able to get it moving a little bit more quickly and cut down some of the steps if you instruct your legal counsel to draft something that you formally submit to the plan commission for consideration.
Thank you, Jacob.
I agree with you. There appears to be. I don't know what your positions are on these things, but I suggest that you, you will register that you can opt to be, you can make a different comment. And then once I have that, I think that it could.
There's nothing for us to vote on. It was a discussion, but I think it'd be very wise if you looked that over for us and start thinking of some.
What I'll do is I'll circulate the email today.
We could have discussion as well at future meetings. Probably have that done.
I, I think what you have, and I think what I have is a, probably a good starting point.
Yeah.
And then whatever additions or corrections you want to include, then, and then I can get you into, I can get you an ordinance that you can have prepared and presented to, at a hearing and move forward from that.
Very good. All right. Thank you.
I'm not done though. I covered three of them. I did not cover the final one, which is industrial solar. And I, can y'all hear me still? I keep trying to scoot up to this. I just kind of want to review where we are currently with industrial solar, because it's been a long time since we've addressed this. I spoke with Laura Wheeler, no, Marsha Tetsloff, last week in the recorder's office to ask, where is Palasguy County currently in number of acres in recorded leases or parcels in recorded leases? She has no idea. She can't give me an answer. I said, I know at last count, when public citizens compiled the list, we were at 26,000 even, right on the dot. That was probably in September or October. Currently, she has no idea where we are, but she said companies are coming in, changing parcels out, swapping parcels out left and right. And she said, I cannot keep track. I said, is there a button you can push to tell the county where we stand? No. She said, the only way that we can do that is if you come in and sit in my office and add up all the acreage or go on some other platform and do it myself, which I personally think is ridiculous. I think we should have a way to know that, but we don't. So the only way to get an accurate number of acres under lease is to go through records individually. And that will not include acres that, I know there are people in the audience right now that have land signed and it has not been recorded. They typically are to have 45 days from the date that the lease is signed to have that recorded at the recorder's office. That is not happening. I will tell you that now. That is not happening. So our county has no clue where we sit in regards to industrial solar. We had an economic impact study done by Baker Tilly years ago, and this included Mammoth and Moss Creek combined. That economic impact study was done on a combined 10,819 acres. We have the figures from that to know how many jobs will actually be lost in the county, how much economic revenue from agriculture will be lost. And, and I know there are people sitting in this audience today who could give us real numbers today. You couldn't do it four and a half years ago. It was, well, we don't know. We don't know what's going to happen. But I've spoken with enough people in the community today to know that our fertilizer companies, seed companies are all losing. And one number that I recently heard was pretty darn high. I think we need to really take a step back. We need time to figure out where this county is, because I'm telling you, there are counties all over the place that are closing the door to all of this. There are counties that are putting restrictions in place. There are counties who are capping acres. I talked to Jasper County Commissioner today, who said his top number, he said, I'd like to put a cap on the numbers, and that cap would be 7,500 acres for Jasper County. He said, the most I would go is 10,000 acres. We're at 26,000 and the numbers that we're hearing are more like 35 to 40. So when you take those numbers and you look at the combined amount of money that we're going to be receiving from Mammoth Solar and Moss Creek, I think I don't know, where is it, somewhere around maybe 50 million over the course of 15, 20 years? But if you look at the studies from Michigan State University that talk about the amount of money that is going to be lost when you remove 1% of acreage from a county, the loss in revenue is in the hundreds of millions of dollars. It doesn't add up, folks. And I, and I think we need to think very seriously about a moratorium on solar, because I'm not sure how we survive what we've already committed to. And I really, I think we need to look at the culture of our county, the agri, the agri and society that we have had for hundreds of years here, because that is at big risk to big corp, big corporations. Our lifestyles are going to change, but I'm asking for a moratorium on this for, for all those reasons. We, we have no idea what's coming, with no accurate number of the total acres. We do still have litigation pending. I know our last attorney told, has, has said repeatedly, litigation in this county is done. Folks, it is not. It is not done. There is one case pending, and I have the cause number, if you would like it, when we're done, so that you can come see it. I do know letters were sent to solar developers that stated, if you proceed, you proceed at your own risk, because this case has not been determined. And right now, our county, we're sitting ducks for lawsuits because we've not had, we, we need those solar companies to sign something that says, we were made aware that there was pending litigation and we're proceeding anyway. Because if they proceed and our county has no protection, guess who's in trouble? So again, I, we've got to have a moratorium until we figure all this out. I'd like to see a new impact, economic impact study. And again, I know there are local businesses that are already feeling the pinch and we don't have the first post in the ground. And again, many counties in Indiana, we've heard before, you can't put a moratorium on these things. That's what our last county attorney told us, can't do it. And we have counties all over the place that are doing it, and we have the fewest protections of most of the counties in the state of Indiana.
Reported.
No, go right ahead.
Moratorium, you're at.
Yeah, I'm talking about any new applications coming in. Right.
Jacob, it would be the same process, would not, would it not?
Well, and I guess you also have to kind of somewhat define what you mean by, because the application could be a number of things. Be a zoning application, be an application for tax abatement. Those are going to go through different processes, which would have to go through the various bodies. So for example, if there was going to be a process in place for tax abatements for any of, because that's a big issue, that's something that's going to go to the council as to where, if it's something that's dealing with zoning or special exception or something like that, that's going to end good. It's, it's not all the same process.
So if it was an application for just a permit, that would go through the.
Well, I guess I kind of have, I have to also define a, a permit for what? Because if you're crossing county drains, that's drainage board. You're crossing the state highway, that's, and you know, you know what I'm saying? So there's a lot of, I, I agree with the, you have to have a scope when you're talking about a moratorium. You have to have a time period and a scope. I would agree that to make a blanket, any and all permits of any kind, that's where you get into legal issues and. But if you can put something in, drainage board resolution or something like that, that's. So you can still accomplish the same thing, it's just.
Probably the U D O.
Right. A moratorium, or through the U D O, yes, but, but as fast as we can get it there. The, the shortest route to getting that done, because again, if a solar company shows up tomorrow morning and puts an application in, they're here. And they're here under the same weak protective ordinances that we currently have. So I would want to see that done immediately, as fast as we can get it done. I mean, I have to call. I, I do have, one concern, I've been crunching numbers for days. One thing that's confusing to me, and, and this, you know, I, I know these two applications have already come in, but I'm, I'm looking at this Baker Tilly study on the jobs created by Mammoth and Moss Creek. And it says a total of 32, and I don't know, somewhere we get 54 jobs. But on the S B one forms that were turned in for the tax abatements, Mammoth said six jobs and Moss Creek said one to two jobs. So here's my, here's my question. All the numbers in this economic impact study that were done, are these numbers based on the numbers that were turned in for the tax abatements? Or are these numbers that were created by solar developers to inflate numbers? Because they don't match, folks. So one of these is not truthful. And, and in a meeting that I went to back in 2020 in Kokomo, where I said, I think it was NG, was the developer, and I said, how many permanent jobs will be created from this solar development? And the representative from NG said, zero. It will all be run remote from Utah. And you can look that meeting up and probably find that answer. So I, I'm, you know, I'd like to see a new economic impact study done on 26,000 acres, because I have a feeling our county's going to be upside down real fast and the corporate people are going to be long gone. So I'm concerned about our agricultural economy that this county was built on. So I, I just, I've been going through things, I have a lot of questions. So yes, the sooner we can get, so I'll be in touch tomorrow.
Jacob, I would, I guess, and Mike, I would, I would, we have a lot of applications out there and we want to see what's happening. I would be opposed to a moratorium as long as we do it legally and correctly.
Same.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you all very much. What are we up to?
Point two, curpsy representatives. Nathan, based upon previous conversation, you've been an individual for that. I'm curpsy and you've done that for several years. The other individual is a commissioner. And the meetings are in Monon, is that correct, Nathan? So.
There are four meetings per year.
Or all members, and then if you are lucky enough to be one of the county's two representatives on the executive board, an additional two.
I will make a motion that Mike and Nathan be the representatives for curpsy.
I will second that motion.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Approve and sign bonds. First of all, we have the treasurer for 300,000, the auditor, Teresa for 30, soil and water district support coordinator, Michelle Fox for 15,000. We have a motion to approve these bonds. Thank you, Mike.
I'll second the motion.
Jenny has a second. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Conference request, we have the clerk going to and assistant going to Indianapolis and the assessor also going to Indianapolis February 4th and 5th. We have a motion to accept the conference request.
I'll make a motion to accept the conference request.
Jenny? Mike has seconded that. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Do we have any further discussion among the three commissioners? Attorney, do you have anything? Attorney, do you have anything further?
Nothing that we have.
Okay. Teresa, you don't want to talk, but do you have anything further? We have a lot of things to say or sign, I'm, a lot of things.
But let's have public discussion, open to the public.
Okay.
No. Stop.
Well, no.
Public comment.
We're good. What is that?
I don't need to, I don't need to, I'm good with that tonight. Thank you, Nathan. Your information was plenty.
So tonight we'll provide public comment. We asked that if you have any comments to make, please come up to the mic so you can be properly heard. Please provide your name as well as where you live would be greatly appreciated. And please limit your comments to approximately two minutes or so. Is there any public comment?
My name's Darrell Goodman, and I guess live it down the road here, not very far. Lifelong resident in Plaski County, farm for 47 years, retired about three years ago. Two minutes is going to be hard for me to use. Can I go a little longer?
Go for it.
Go for it. All right. Well, it's probably going to be longer than that, I'm sorry. But thank you for letting me speak. The last commissioner, and I want to preface this just a little bit with my comments. The last commissioner meeting, I came up and tried to make comments. There was one person in front of me, I was the second one in line. And I didn't want to, I wanted to be courteous, so I stood to the side, side of the room over there. And the lady that is going to be overseeing the, overseeing the, the project, the solar projects to make sure that they're done correctly, came up and spoke in front of me. Not a problem, that's fine. She's an important lady, she needed to, she needed to state what she wanted to state. But after that, the commissioner shut the meeting down. I never had a, never had a chance to speak. And I'm not saying this in a bragging way, but as a sizable landowner and taxpayer of property taxes, I felt as though I should add five minutes to say what I had to say. But in a way, it's all worked out because I get to speak to the new commissioners. So I appreciate that very much. I'm going to, I'm going to talk just a little bit about the, the campaign, and, and I'm just thankful that that's over with. I don't have to look at the Darrell campaign ads in the paper, the full page ads. They had four things that they talked about, that it's going to be good for livestock farming, the solar farms are going to be good for livestock farming. It's going to be land preservation, and you can go back and look at these ads, it's going to be land preservation for the future. Oh, that land's going to be at rest, and as soon as that solar is gone, it's going to be ready to go back into production. The other issue, and I want to address this a little bit, is the property rights issue. The ad said, attack on solar equals attack on land rights. I couldn't disagree with that more. Economic, and then they went on to the economic benefits, and I want to talk about the property rights. You're not going to find a person in Plaski County that does not support property rights more than me. But there's two sides to that coin. There's one side, property rights, and the other side is my first amendment right to speak. And I have that right to do that. And if I don't think that the project is going to be good for Plaski County, I should have the right to say no. And we can have a discussion about that, but I, I really feel that way. And once again, I don't believe that the solar projects are going to be favorable to Plaski County in the long run. And I'm going to tell you why. We're an agricultural community. We always have been. What happens to agriculture is going to affect the businesses in Plaski County. And I look at farmland in Plaski County and nationwide as a national security, really a national security issue, because we can feed people, we can feed animals, we can feed the ethanol plant, down at climbers, or over in Rensselaer, wherever we want to go with that. So I think that it's a, it's a big issue. How does this project affect the, the businesses in Plaski County? How does it affect our implement dealers? How's it going to do that? How's it going to affect our farm, farm supply store and the hardware stores? What about the parts store, the fertilizer dealers, the irrigation companies, our fuel companies? How's it going to affect good? Do you guys know what it's going to do and how that's going to affect them? How about the seed dealers? I, I had dinner with a fertilizer dealer that I've dealt with over the years. He said that this year, he's going to lose 22% of his business. That's almost a fourth of the acres that he does. That's a huge impact on businesses in our county. And I really feel that we need to take a look, strong look at those things. Also, what's it going to do to our young farmers? I retired out three years ago. I got a guy that I know is going to take care of the ground as good or better than I did. But as of this year, and I had like 20 different landlords, they weren't all big ones, plus the ground that I own. And, and how's that going to affect that young farmer? This year, one of the landlords decided, he, he, he signed his ground up. That's his privilege to, to do that. But he's losing 10% of his ground. Of the ground that's already signed up for him, within the next few years, if that goes into produc, he's going to lose 30% of his ground. You got to look at some of those things and how it affects the people in the county and the citizens in the county. I know I'm going longer than two minutes, but just bear with me. Also, what about the ordinary citizen? You guys serve not just the big landowners, not everybody can own 200 acres or 500 acres or thousands of acres. What about the landowners that only one, own one acre, two acres, 10 acres? And their ground is going to be surrounded by the solar farms. What's that going to do to their property values? What's that going to do to them? I don't think they came to Plaski County to see full solar farms. They came to Plaski County to see, see other things, and so, one of my concerns. Question for you, not answer, just question. How many acres are considered farmland in Plaski County? 231,880 acres. How many solar, I'm going to ask you guys, how many solar companies are there that are, that have permits to build in Plaski County at this time?
I believe four or five.
Okay, thank you. How many have applied to come into the county? You know that? So it's just the ones that have been issued permits? Nobody?
Well, I think.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
I've heard, I've heard nine to 11, but I'm not sure where those are in the process.
Okay.
They're just.
Okay. As, another question, are there, and I think I already know the answer to that, but are there limits on these solar farms? The guys that have got the permits, the companies that have the permits, is there a limit on how many acres they can put into the county?
There is not.
That's reasonable.
Okay, understood. So at 26,000 acres, that's 11% right now of the farmland in our county is designated for solar, and there's probably going to be more than that. So I think that's an issue we better be looking at really closely. And as you guys as leaders, I think you need to do that, and you need to find out what's going on, and there needs to be limits set, or we're not going to have a very nice county And then, I'm just about done, guys, so hang in. I would like to see, I would like to see a map of the solar farms, how many acres they are going to do right now, how many acres, I, I think you need to put set limits on that. And then I think it needs to be published in the Plaski County Journal so that we as citizens know what's going on with our county and what the future of our county is going to be. I would just ask you, I would ask you guys to be transparent with the citizens of Plaski County and let us know.
In the.
In the building, inspectors, okay, I'll check that out.
Mike just apart from that.
Okay. Okay.
I, I do know that with so many acres not even having been recorded, it.
Okay.
No. And I think we're hearing development, or we're hearing acres all over Alaski County, not just along the lines now.
Okay. So I think as public servants, or maybe even us as citizens, we need to find those things out.
We do.
So I'm going to close with this. Sorry I took so long, but I appreciate you allowing me to talk. I've got the Indiana Hunting and Trapping Guide for 2024 and 2025. Think, why did you bring this up? Look at the back cover, about Plaski County. There's a picture of the Tepugene River with an old bridge going over the top of it, up at the state park. Up at the state park, there's a couple pictures there, and then there's a picture of a deer there. You know why I live in Plaski County? Is I could farm, is I could enjoy nature, is I had the ability to hunt. And you know what this says? It says, Plaski County, Indiana, the simple things matter. This is a great ad. Whoever put it in there, that's a great ad. But it says, an outdoorsman's paradise. Well, I don't want to lose that. You know? So I don't want to see solar panels on the back of my hunting guide. I want to see wildlife and so forth. So thank you very much for letting me talk.
Thank you, Darrell.
Thank you, Darrell.
Anybody else like to speak?
It's kind.
Name and.
Sorry, Brandy Larkin, and I'm in Winna Mac. Thank you very much. I would like to know if the Plaski County leadership has done a benefit and risk assessment to all of these unnatural things that are looking at being warranted and coming into our county? From a natural impact perspective, an economic perspective, a quality of life perspective, et cetera, has our leadership team or the county overall come together and conducted something like that? Is that something you would be opposed to doing?
So I think with the, at least from my perspective, talk about a moratorium, Jimmy, a lot of risk you had talked about. Okay. I think that is something part of the, of change that we have to.
Okay. And hopefully a part of that process, if that avenue is explored, because many of us, myself included, I will admit, I, I don't know enough. Like, I'm looking to learn more, and I truly want to understand the impact that this is going to have on our home. And I'm an advocate of being proactive and not reactive, and I feel like we're very much stuck in a reactive position right now. So if there's any way we can rise above that, I would be willing to help participate in any way I can in focus groups, discussions, but I also recognize the value of outside perspective and hope that we would seek that, because we collectively as a community don't know what we don't know. And I would hope that we all want the best for what's to come for our current generation and the future generations. And there's more than, I think it's been said a few times, there's more than one side to the coin. So I would like to know the impacts more broadly, not just economic, not just natural resources, but collectively, like, what are, what are we looking at? What does that holistic picture look like? And then going back to what Mr. Goodman just said again, like, share that in the paper, like, let us all publicly know what that looks like and how you're coming to your decision formation, because a lot of it seems very gray right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
On Kramer, Winna Mac. For those of you that don't know what the AI data centers are. They are big, huge buildings. They're putting them up all over the state, think you're getting one down by Louisville and Jeffersonville, something over by Fort Wayne. What they are is they're huge buildings that require a lot of cooling and a lot of power. The mainframes take up a lot of power. I read a report, I can't for the life of me remember when it was, about a year ago, they said that currently, the grid cannot sustain all these data centers that are proposed coming online. And so the reason they putting in a lot of this solar is they're doing this, and it's going to funnel most of the energy to these data centers. Now, AI data centers, AI, we've all seen Terminator, we kind of know what that means. Eventually, AI is not going to be our friend. It's going to be used by Google, Bezos, to basically spy on us, big brother. And nobody wants that. And so that's just my thoughts on that. Feel free to, don't take my word for it. Do your own, do your own research.
Thank you, John. And, and that's, that's one of the issues that has bothered me. Four and a half years ago, when industrial solar rolled into Plaski County, we were told by the solar developers that this energy was going to be going to northern Michigan and to the east coast. And over the last four and a half years, of course, Boone County, if you follow the LEAP project in Boone County, they were wanting to funnel hundreds of millions of gallons of water, because these AI data centers have to be cooled, and it takes enormous amounts of water. And it would be from our aquifers up here. So the counties to the north became very upset, and they're having a hard time getting that going right now. I'm not sure where they are in the project, but these AI data centers require 100 times the energy of traditional industry. So this energy, and if you follow Governor Holcomb, he has designated the northwest section of Indiana as the energy power for the state. So his goal, from what I read, is that we will provide all of the electricity by covering our fields with industrial solar and wind and anything else that we can do to benefit these large AI data centers. So we have a responsibility to protect our rural counties, because the state, at least under Governor Holcomb, was not. And you can find those articles, we, we had been targeted for that, which is why a lot of this, a lot of these renewables are moving in here. And again, we were not told the truth in the beginning. That energy was not for Michigan, it's for powering homes. That energy is not for the east coast. That energy is to power these large data centers that are going to be spread out across the state of Indiana. So do we want corporate America to take over our county for the sake of these types of centers? And I just ask you to do the research. The information is out there. You can find out what's going on. But I don't think we should give up our county for that. That's my opinion.
Anyone else, public comment?
Joe.
Joe Moyer, Star City, Indiana. I would just want to thank the new commissioners and Mike for the conduct of this meeting. It's refreshing. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Evening. My name's Tom Thomas, Tom Board President, Francisville, Indiana. I also live in Francisville. And as far as the solar and the carbon capture and all that, I don't believe that Plaski County should be allowing this. It's going to hurt our economies. We are a farming community, not a solar. And with the solar coming in, they were trying to come into Francisville, to the outskirts, and we have our own zoning over there, so we're able to keep them out at least two miles. So they were wanting to come clear up to town. So I think, I think we ought to just stop them dead in the water. You know, all the businesses in town, the fertilizer places, Gill singers or Green Mart and whatever, they're losing sales because farmers can't afford to take and go out and buy new equipment. They got solar, they got to worry about whether they're going to be able to hold onto the ground they've got. And not only is that going to affect those industries, it's going to affect the banking industries as well as our ability as, as individuals to get loans. So, you know, it's going to totally impact the total economy, not just the local farmer. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Anyone else? Brandy, already spoke.
I know, but not for a full two minutes. I know, but not for a full two minutes, like, more like a minute and forty-five seconds. I've got to. The other components that I would like to request in doing such an assessment, you know, again, piggybacking off of what we're hearing, is the health impact. We really don't know that, and I think we should be looking into that. What, what impact could these things have on our health and the emergency services? And I will also piggyback off of Moyer. I do appreciate being able to hear what you're saying, things being conducted in a professional manner, and public input being able to happen.
You're welcome.
Honey Erlich, and I have a house just down the road here in Winna Mac. Again, thank you very much for allowing people to speak. It's refreshing, and I would like for you to introduce our new attorney.
I'm happy to. My name's Jacob Ailer. I grew up about five minutes, or five miles west of Francisville, so I, yeah, yeah, off Moody Road. And my, my law office is in Rinsalier, Indiana, but I practice law pretty much in Jasper and every county. I am also the county attorney for Benton County.
Well, welcome to Plaski County.
Thank you.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
And then I want to say a little bit more about what Brandy mentioned. About the moratoriums, please allow enough time. There's so much research that needs to be done on the data centers and everything that Jenny mentioned. And I know Madison, Marshall County, just last week put a two-year moratorium in place. And I would recommend that you do that. And if you could, please give the A P C the authorization to maybe form some subcommittees. Because these are three independent, different industries that aren't really related. So there's going to be a lot of research that needs to be done. So I just ask that you give the A P C the authority to put the committees in place as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike? Thank you.
I second the motion.
Second. Need a adjourn.
Thank you.